All right. Going to reconvene here. I'm going through my list. And the next person I have here is Ken Stanger.
Thank you. My name is Kenneth M. Stanger. I'm an attorney. I represent some folks that oppose this project. Usually Karen Hax was here, but I'm here tonight. I want to talk about something that I heard at the beginning of this meeting. This is a process. It's based on a fact-finding process. Whenever you hear a lawyer offer you his opinion as fact, check your wallet. That's what I heard tonight as we started this meeting. I heard Mr. Ward Willis say, "This project complies with zoning." That's his opinion. In my opinion, it does not. And as a consequence of that, I've set in motion another process. If the bound, the basis for that finding, or that, my opinion, not a fact yet, is that in your zoning code, you list, you allow mixed use here in the hamlet, you give a list of all the kinds of uses that fit within the mixed use, and a gas lane station is not on that list. And if it's not on that list, it can't be included in the mixed use. And if it's not included in the mixed use, it's not permitted in the hamlet. Now, that's my opinion. That's what lawyers do. We give opinions. But when someone up here says, "Oh, it's consistent with zoning," that's his opinion, not a fact. And there's a second, a second major issue with this application, again involving the zoning code. There's been a lot of talk tonight about how zoning code section 242-52C was amended. And it was amended. And it was amended, it seems, in timing to somehow facilitate this application. But the statute itself, I don't know who wrote it, because it says, this is the statute that lets you put, or may let you put apartments on top of gas stations. It says, "In the hamlet mixed-use district, dwelling units which are separate from the gas station and use may be permitted above the commercial ground floor use in the principal gas station building." Think about that. In one sentence, an apartment has to be separated from the gas station. In the same sentence, the apartment can be above the ground commercial floor of the gas station. That's an internal incongruity. It's an ambiguity. And it raises the question as to whether or not that statute, as amended, has any meaning whatsoever, let alone a meaning that can be interpreted in a manner that would support this application. Because without the effect of that statute and the interpretation given to it by this applicant, this application can't stand. It falls. It's not a matter of, from my perspective as a lawyer, I've listened to the concerns of the people who live in Eusoville. But the argument I make is somewhat more fundamental. It goes right to the heart of this process. Now, none of the lawyers in this room can tell you conclusively, I'd like to just finish this quickly, conclusively as to whether or not we're right. Only, there's another process, though, that's outside of this process. The only person in this town who can initially tell us whether I'm wrong or right is the zoning administrator. She has the exclusive jurisdiction to make that determination. If somebody doesn't like that answer, they get to go to the zoning board of appeals to get a final ruling from them before going to the judiciary. Now, I, you must get millions of letters. So maybe two months ago, we wrote a letter saying, "Hey, here are the variances we think you need to get. We think you need to have a use variance before you can make this application. We think you need an interpretation on that statute." And I think, you get so many, maybe you didn't see them while we asked you to refer these questions to the zoning, to the zoning administrator. I referred them to the zoning administrator last week. She has the questions in front of her. These are what they call predicate questions. If these questions are answered no, then this application is done. If this, if this, if the administrator, I'm sorry, if the determination is that a use variance is required to sustain this application, then the use variance has to be acquired from the ZBA before you proceed with this application. If the decision is that you can't make sense of that statute, because in the first half of it, it says the building, the apartment has to be separated from the gas station, and the second half of the sentence, it says it can be built above it. If you can't make sense of that statute, this application can't fly. So the reason why I raised this, this question directly with you tonight, and I appreciate you giving the time to do it, is because wouldn't it make sense to let that process go through and get that determination made by the people who have the legal ability and the responsibility to make it? And then proceed here, because you will know whether or not you have an application that's literally viable or it's theoretical. And there's a lot of people here tonight who have invested on both sides, a lot of time and money, and a lot of heart, and a lot of emotion, a lot of family, a lot of neighbor. But this is the predicate question. Can they do this? Is this application sustainable under the zoning code? If it's not, all these, everyone in this room, who's really been put through a lot of hard work and consideration this evening, well, it's kind of like you've done it before you really had to. Maybe you never did. So, thank you. I've sent this letter in. I also have a letter from my planner, which I will leave with the planning board's secretary, asking to keep this public hearing open, because she's, we've only had since the 20th, since we knew that this new submission was in place. And she has some detailed comments, which I will not repeat here. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. All right. Carlos Oliveras, 12 Hamilton Road.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having me. I'm off into the community. I live at 12 Hamilton. It's a cute cul-de-sac of Marlerville. The traffic situation has been brought up over and over again. I believe the study was done in 2019, if I'm not mistaken. That's either prior or in the middle of the COVID pandemic, which raises some concerns. Obviously, we're looking at realistic numbers. We didn't have as many people outside as, as we do once the restrictions start lifting like they are now, once the train station opens up. Besides that, I have a question. I don't know who's have an answer to it, or whether or not it is relevant. We do have a farm down the road from the proposed project, and it is an organic farm. Has anybody contacted the Department of Agriculture on this project?
That I don't think we have at this point. It's not far enough out from the project.
Fair enough. The only thing I have to say is that, yes, we need progress. We need economy to come to our town, to our villages, to our hamlets. But one thing that we have to keep in mind is, how high of a price are we willing to pay for that progress? Do we want that progress at the expense of our quality of life, our health and safety? Just let's keep that in mind for those of you that have the power to make these decisions and deny or allow these projects to come to us. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Carla Hill, 28 Bowden Road.
Bowden Lane.
Bowden Lane, sorry.
Hi, I'm Carla Hill. I live at 28 Bowden Lane, off Wheeler Hill Road. I moved to Dutchess County 47 years ago, and I have been traveling Route 9D the whole time that we've lived here, both for shopping, for going shopping, going to work, everything else. My husband's a former, retired IBMer. So I really appreciate Mr. Mayor Nacho's comments about if people are going to turn west onto New Hamburg Road, it's probably going to be Wheeler Hill Road where they will decide to do their U-turn. And that's one of my comments. We've talked about how the traffic on 9D is going to be affected, how the traffic on New Hamburg Road is going to be affected. What about the traffic on roads like Wheeler Hill Road, Old Troy Road, Marlerville Road, that people are already traveling to avoid the traffic light at 9D and New Hamburg Road, Old Hope Road? Wheeler Hill Road is terrible. When you have, you have two cars trying to pass there, there's not room. You have a school bus and a car trying to go the opposite direction of a school bus. The road is not very wide. I mean, it doesn't even have a line down the center of it. So it's not a wide road, yet people are using that road and Old Troy Road, which is a one-way road, curvy road, to avoid the traffic light. How is the traffic there going to be impacted if there's a possibility of additional traffic on 9D and New Hamburg Road? I myself have used Marlerville Road to avoid the traffic light if I'm coming south and then turning onto New Hamburg Road east to get to Wheeler Hill Road. This is what's done now. How much worse is it going to be if we have this gas station and convenience store there? I have talked to people who have no dealings with Eusoville, but who, other than driving Route 9D, and when I mentioned this to them, their first comment was, "You don't need a gas station there, and you have another convenience store 500 feet down the road. Why do you want that?" Yes, it would be nice to have that area developed, the old hamlet and all of that, taken down and developed, maybe a small restaurant or something like that that will bring people into the area and wanting them walking around. If we have the sidewalks, yes, it would be great to walk. It would be great to have the fixes from Old Hope Road to New Hamburg Road. But we don't need the additional traffic and the traffic, therefore, on the other roads. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Alan Miller, 580 Wheeler Hill Road. Fly right through these sheets here. Let's see. Naomi Gutierrez, 1 Caroline Drive West.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Naomi Gutierrez. I have lived in the area for over 20 years. While driving through this property, I seen all the signs, everything on Facebook. Sorry, I'm going to take this off. Everything on Facebook. I have, I was curious about it, so I went searching about it, what was going on. Like I said, I had lived in this area for over 20 years. I own a home in the town of Wapengers. I looked, and I found out about the zoning and the sites that allows the gas station. So gas stations are permitted use there. That's right. Gas stations are allowed. That's something that it's allowed in the town. The other state, where the developer is right, where the developer has the right to build the gas station. Let's say that aside for a moment. Another point that I wanted to bring up is that the area is rundown. It's been rundown for over, for at least 20 years since I've been in this area. This rhythm was not, were not architectural gems. There is not real aesthetic here, with the exception that the fact that the buildings are mostly rundown and older. They're crying for help. Now, let's talk about the traffic. The intersection here is really busy. We all know that. It's been like that for many, many years. These roads are county and state-owned roads. The traffic issue has been a problem for a long, as I remember. What have the state and the county done about it? It's been like that for many years. Have I, the other thing that I have heard from other ones that have spoken is in regards to what are we doing about it? Nothing has been done over the traffic for, for a very long time. I understand the developer also have committed to extend the water line from New Hamburg Road to Marlerville Road. In my opinion, the developer is investing in our community here. The gas station will serve drivers around, around on the road in most instances. The development is different from something like our new subdivision, which will worsen the traffic problem by contributing more cars to the train station, which is one of the biggest problems that we have in our area. Why don't we petition Metro North to make improvement to our road, to our railways, which we all know they're not going to do that? In that case, the developer is investing a good deal on the traffic, good deal for us in regards to fixing our community. They're doing at least their part, you know, and when it comes to the sense, and most are at this point. So I just wanted to say that I do agree that the gas station should go there. I don't see what's, you know, wrong about that. It's going to develop right now. That road looks really bad. There's a lot of things that can be fixed. And yes, we all can contribute at the same time to make it better, but nobody's doing anything about it, unfortunately. So just sitting here and saying we need to do something about it is not helping the cause. We need to do something about it. And if someone is willing to invest in our community, we should at least listen to it, especially when it comes to that small part of area, because it looks really bad. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Claudia McKay, 2336 Route 9D.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Claudia McKay at 23, 2036 Wapinger Falls. I've been in this, I've been in this neighborhood for four years now. I have a beautiful home, and I just want to say that my brother, my son-in-law and my daughter reside, will be with me. I'm a great-grandmother of a lot of children, but I want to say that I love this community. I've been around the neighborhood, and I want to say that my brother, my son-in-law has walked around the neighborhood, walked to the train station, got hit by a speeding car, and he died later. And I think you need a speed bump. I mean, you need a sidewalk, and we don't need new gas stations. That's what I had to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Patricia Fallon, 24 Reed Road.
On way to the train station.
Hi, thank you for your time. I would like to speak out against the proposed gas station project. I commute through that intersection every weekday, and it is already a major traffic choke point with long delays in both directions. Anything that would slow cars coming, going through there would make an already bad situation even worse. The people presenting on behalf of this project haven't addressed this, but looking at the plans, they are likely going to need to close lanes, and if so, for construction, and if so, the traffic delays would cause major disruptions. People take 9D to avoid the traffic congestion on Route 9. If they end up going back to Route 9 to avoid the lane closures on 9D, the north-south traffic flow in Dutchess County could well grind to a halt. I am emotional about this issue, not just as a commuter who won't be able to get home or get to work, but on behalf of one of my friends, a fellow nurse who lived in Hyde Park. She contracted cancer and died after a long, painful illness when underground gas tanks leaked carcinogens into the local well water. This is a real thing that happened. You can look in the Poughkeepsie Journal. It is inconceivable to me that the board would approve underground gas storage tanks in an area where people still get their water from wells. In addition to the health risks, the people in this community who end up living near a gas station would find that their property values go down, their insurance costs go up, and their homes become harder to sell when they live near a gas station. All of this can be verified just by going on Google. The board needs to act to protect local residents and cancel this project. If they do not care enough about their residents, they should at least reflect that if there are any illnesses or other damages, such as fires or likely traffic accidents, the town would potentially be legally liable for damages if they approve this project. Please reconsider while there is still time to prevent this disaster in the making. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Okay. Thank you. James Walensky, 2498 Route 9D.
Good evening, gentlemen of the board. I am also going to speak for Joe Edwards. Everybody here know him?
For who?
He's a cornerstone in the hamlet of Eusoville, at the Eusoville mark. Okay? He's on vacation. He can't make it. And the way this goes on and on and on, just sometimes I can't make it either. But I'm going to give you three letters, which scare the hell out of me after working on cars for 40 years. It's called MTB, oxygenated fuel concentrated. They put in gasoline. One ounce can corrupt over 100 million gallons of water. Do we want our people on well water if we're going to have a little spill on the gas station parking lot? Trust me, you don't want that, opening up a can of worms. I am going to say this for everybody inside and outside. I couldn't find one that said "us," but that's pretty much what it means. We, the people, are part of a democracy. You work for us, not for Gasland. I don't care how much money he's got. I don't care his name is on the Civic Center, because I don't go there. You know why? Because I'd like to see Dutchess County Civic Center, not Nijmaat. But then again, money buys everything, right? I'm not on the take. I don't care. I'm sure I'm going to have to hire an attorney after this, but hey, at the later part of life, I travel this road every morning at 4:30, and I'm doing the speed limit, and I got some moron coming southbound doing 50, past my house, and they pass me solid yellow line. What good are laws if we don't have anybody to enforce them? Oh, yeah, it's all in writing, but that's about as far as it got. So let's work on getting more policing instead of more intersection problems. We don't need another gas station. And I can pretty much say everybody here and out there will boycott the place. It'll be the first brand-new building put up that doesn't get a customer local. And as you can hear, they hear me. Gentlemen, have a great night. And if it goes through, well, we'll be watching your pockets.
That's inappropriate.
Yeah.
May be inappropriate to you, doing what you did to me last time.
Still inappropriate.
All right. It's not.
Any meaning without getting everybody injured?
All right. One more speaker on here this evening. Stephen Krusty, 14 Marlerville Road.
He left.
He left?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have any, is that the end of the people that signed up?
No. They're all in here. They're all in here?
They're all in here?
Yes.
So everybody that you had that wanted to speak?
Right.
Okay. So I guess we're, okay. I guess we've gone through the list.
Mr. Chairman, I'd be brief. I just have an opportunity to respond to some of the comments. Procedurally, you know, Mr. Stanger got up here and made a couple of comments, and you might think that's the first time that no one else has ever thought of these things. This application has been before the board for a number of months. It's been vetted by Townstat to suggest that it's inappropriate. There's procedural questions as to what law applies is completely inappropriate. It doesn't delay this process. It shouldn't be used as another reason to try to delay this process. That's independent. If he wants to pursue whatever he wants to pursue, he should do so. Mr. Bertie would have preferred this application to the board, and it'd be processed and held for a public hearing. You've heard from the past what this would be, fourth or fifth public hearing. So I think it's a little bit of a red herring to try to, yet further, delay this application. Substitutively, I want to make a couple of comments. There were a couple of comments about archaeological resources. This project went through the process. SHIPOL looked at it. They were aware of the process. They responded back with a letter that is in the record, that there are no archaeological resources or anything else that is listed. So we've done our due diligence with respect to this property. It's in the record. I'd also note with respect to the environmental assessment form, section 2.1.3 goes through the supporting information for the special use permit. We've answered the questions as to how the law applies to this application, and more importantly, how we satisfy it so that you can make the determinations that's required of it. And we encourage you to read section 2.1.3 as well as 2.1.4, which references the Greenway Compact Program and some of the arguments I have made earlier. I want to point out that one of the speakers made a statement that Gasland hired the experts. Look, he's right. They did hire. They went through the process the right way. You bring people who are informed to understand the process. We've worked within the confines of your town code. We didn't end up with a project that we started with. It's had a number of different variations in response to comments from staff, in response to comments from this board, in response to comments from the public. It's evolved to respond to those comments. And so we've looked at the traffic, which is really the issue here, and the people on the roads, the state and the county, have responded that mitigation measures we've proposed, the traffic studies we've done, are all appropriate and demonstrate that we are not creating any significant adverse environmental impact with respect to traffic. The DOT reviewed our data. The data was submitted pre-pandemic. It was also compared against DOT's pre-pandemic traffic data. And as I said, DOT reviewed that data and accepted our reports. So I understand the concerns of the public. A lot of it is, what is characterized by reports is general community opposition. The planning board is without authority there. You have a certain set of laws that you need to apply, and it's up to others to make those other decisions. But your board has to apply that, the laws that are before you. The fact there were too many gas stations that were one mile away is irrelevant to the questions that are before you. And I know that's difficult for the public to understand, but our client has rights as well, just as they have rights for their properties, we have rights for our property to have it developed. And what we've set forth in our papers, and that has been reviewed by this board, are how we comply with those issues. For example, complaints about the environmental contamination. There are rules we comply with that is also outside your jurisdiction. That's controlled by the DEC. And I know it's been a long night, so I'm going to wrap up in just a moment. You know, residents are asking you to do things that are outside of your control. We need to apply the law that is before you, and we've satisfied those concerns. I would ask tonight that the board close the public hearing. You've received comments in the past. You've received comments again. I certainly understand many governors who want to submit written comments. I think if you want to leave it open for a written comment period, that's not unusual or appropriate, but I think we would request that you close tonight's public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. All right. So at the point of the evening, we get down to, we heard the comments from the public, from previous public hearings. That's one I think we're pretty much looking at all the same items. The rest of the board, do we close the public hearing tonight and leave it with a 30-day window? Somebody wants to make a motion for that?
We have a motion to close the public hearing and leave a 30-day window for any written comments anybody may want to submit.
Okay. That motion's been made.
Second?
We have a second. All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
One opposed?
One.
Okay. Motion carriers. All right. So, at this point in the, we're at the end of the agenda for the evening. Unless there's anything pertinent that needs to be discussed by the board at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So?
Okay, motion's made. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carriers. Thank you.